I've heard, yeah. Unfortunately, I've also got a cat we're allied. Yeah, yeah, child, I have a fellow tribal scat human. Can't, can't quite go full circle and be a Swifty, though. That's where they lose me.
Looks at you seven thirty. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Here.
Ms. Raghu?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Okay, can we have a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we can move on to public comments. Any wishing to address council but items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda, please come forward as this is the time to state, but make sure you state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to speak. Seeing none, may we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any items to be removed? All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, can we move on to our first resolution?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Rumke of Ohio Incorporated for the collection and disposal of solid waste for the, of solid waste and for the collection and processing of recyclable materials for the city of Oxford and its residents for a two-year period commencing January first, 2025, and three one-year options through December thirty-first, 2029.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mike.
Good evening. Our current five-year contract with Rumke is ending, and so we've advertised for new bids. We did get a comment from the Environmental Commission on the specifications for the contract. They requested that we include curbside collection of compostable waste from kitchen scraps, and also a new category for cardboard only for recycling and dumpsters. So those were included in the specs we advertised, and as expected, only received one bid back from Rumke of Ohio. We bid the contract in two different manners. One way was a two-year contract with three one-year options. The other was for a straight five-year contract. After analyzing the rates, particularly the residential rates, it was very clear that the best contract for Oxford is the two-year with three options. By doing that over a five-year period, we will save approximately $431,000 based on the residential rates. There was one bit exception from Rumke. There is not a locally licensed facility that can accept the compostable waste that's economically feasible to go to. So they chose not to bid on that particular item, but bid on all facets of the rest of the contract. In analyzing the rates that were proposed by Rumke, they were increased by approximately eighteen and a half percent. So we were not surprised by that. They warned us that there were going to be increases. The CPI over the last five years has gone up approximately twenty percent. So this bid is in line with inflation and the current economy. To put the bid in perspective, though, where our charge is going to be approximately seventeen sixty per month, a township resident can be paying thirty-six, thirty-seven per month for the same services. So the difference there is the city administers the finances of the contract. So we are billing and collecting monies, and Rumke does not have that expense, or they do have that expense in a township contract. And again, the rate increase is in line with the CPI. We recommend moving forward with this two-year contract and three optional years, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
I just have a question, Mike, and this is just, could be my ignorance about the way this goes. One of the things we've talked about back and forth is that trying to move more of our multifamily complexes into doing recycling, and that's been a debate on the Environmental Commission and whether we mandate that or not. This kind of sets the price on things. Does this constrain us at all if, for example, the city were to try to move towards encouraging multifamily or commercial to introduce recycling where it's not there? Does this contract just set the price for that? Would that facilitator be an impediment to that in any way?
No, this contract will facilitate that.
Okay.
We're charging administrative fees on the solid waste portion. So you can save money by recycling.
Okay.
The city is not charging administrative fees for a recycling dumpster. So built into this contract is a financial incentive for a landlord or property owner to recycle. It is cheaper to recycle than to have a solid waste account and to landfill the material.
Awesome. So there's a bit of a carrot there, and if ever we decided on a regulatory side to try to provide a little bit of a stick, those things would, they, they could work together. Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
And I should also mention, we did have a healthy fund balance, and after meeting with the finance director and city manager, we're recommending we use some of that surplus and soften the blow of these rate increases. So later tonight, when we review the fee ordinance, you'll see that we're only recommending a four percent increase in solid waste rates. The contract is higher, but we're absorbing the rate increases with our fund balance.
So that could be a stepped up or down, depending on your definition. So it's four percent, but for how long before it gets to the regular?
It would be a four percent increase, just in the initial two-year terms, or no increase in year two. And then there would be adjustments in years three through five.
But their increase that Mike mentioned, the eighteen point four nine, that's for two years. So it doesn't go up in the second year, and we have to introduce in our fee ordinance what we're going to do in 2026.
I have a couple of questions, because I know that dumpster for recycling in the past was no charge, correct, in previous contracts? How much is it now for multifamily homes or apartments? Is that right, or is it just discounted? Do you remember?
I don't, I'm not aware of that, no charge.
Okay, I thought we had subsidized the charge to the apartment complex to incentivize them.
Maybe it's the administrative cost is the thing, yeah.
The administrative fee is waived, so again, the financial incentive to recycle is it's much cheaper than paying the solid waste rates. It's not free. You still have to collect and truck the material and sort it and find a market for it. But it's still much cheaper than landfilling and paying landfill surcharges and all of that.
Are you think, thinking about the residential recycling?
Possibly. I thought it extended over to multifamily, but I must be remembering that wrong.
If you want to switch from a red bin to a?
You can get a larger wheeled cart for recycling. There's no charge for that.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought there was something with the dumpster, but I must be remembering it incorrectly. And then I know when I spoke to the director of recycling at Rumke, he said that composting is on the horizon for Rumke. They know that is the future. Did they make any comments on timeline for you for composting?
They said it solely is on a, a closed facility that's permitted to take the waste. So they talk about two in the pipeline, but as of today, nothing's permitted. So they chose not to bid. We, we can revisit that should someone get a class-two permit.
And would that be something at the end of the two-year? Will we be, I mean, when would that fit into the contract if something were to come online? Would be at the end of the two-year period and on the one-year extensions, or any time in between?
There's no reason we couldn't make an adjustment with both parties' approval in the two-year contract.
Let's hope for a regional composting facility. Thank you.
That already has the infrastructure to do curbside. That'd be great. Yeah. Any other? Okay. So can do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Moving on to second resolution.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to request advanced property, payment of property taxes to the city in 2025 from Butler County.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, Heidi?
Good evening, councilors. This resolution is a standard resolution that we were, we have required to approve, to, to request that Butler County remit the 2025 property taxes, which they've already received to the city earlier than the standard date that they typically do. It's something we do every year. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Short and sweet. Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Moving on to the next resolution.
A resolution approving revisions to the employee handbook.
Okay, motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Jessica?
Good evening, councilors. Every few years, we bring back the handbook to update some policies, whether it be minor adjustments or confusion that's occurred. And this year, there's actually a lot of policies at the request of our insurance agency to be able to get a better bid when we go out for insurance. Some of the highlights would be on page eleven. We updated on-call pay language. That was a bit confusing. We now offer two health plan models, a PPO model and a high deductible model. So with that high deductible, we now have a health savings account option. We also clarified in the handbook that spouses who have insurance at their employer need to take it. And if their status of insurance changes within the year, they need to let us know. So this is a clarification that we added in. We updated our employee assistance program. We're changing the provider under Jefferson Health Plan. We clarified our personal leave advance. We clarified the trigger for examining when FMLA needs to be used. We did remove the public service leave since we now have a fully paid fire department. It was allowing leave to volunteer for our own department, and we felt like that was stated language. We clarified marijuana, because it's now legal, so we kind of added that throughout. It's still illegal to use in the city. We accept federal funding, just so you know. And then political activity clarification. With the insurance policies recommendation, we added a new defamation policy. We did add clarification on promotions within the city. Clarification about our safety manual. At our insurance policies request, we added a new youth protection policy. We added in the hands-free phones on city vehicles, and we updated our motor vehicle check frequency. We added a little bit more clarification under use of tobacco and nicotine. With the request of the employee advisory committee, we added in clarification on parking. We added in the travel policy. Instead of a standalone policy, we rolled it into the handbook. We added a clarification regarding equipment and uniform return upon termination. With the insurance agency's request, we added a new gift policy. We added a clarification on prior experience credit. And we added some language under use of artificial intelligence in our work. I sent an email about this earlier today. I would like to request a friendly amendment on page eighteen under approval of leave. And this would just add two sentences, that supervisors may grant up to eighty hours of continuous leave, which could be any combination of comp time, personal, or vacation. For employees who are requesting additional leave beyond the eighty hours consecutively, approval from both their supervisor and the city manager and his or her designated leave will be necessary. The reason for this request would be, our attorney has informed me of some nefarious activities that could occur with extended leave, and that having this extra layer of review. I mean, we would still say yes, if you want to take a European trip and do a longer trip, sure, as long as it's playing, then we would have some extra review. But it would allow some prevention of perhaps some nefarious activity that he reported to me about some different public entities. And also just provides a little bit of clarity when a person might want to separate from the city about, because we pay people out for their unused vacation. And so that use of leave at the end of your time with the city. So I would request that, if you'd be willing.
Would, we would need to make the amendment first, right?
Yeah, I would, you would need to make the motion to make a friendly amendment, and then have a second. And then vote on that, and then we would vote on the whole handbook and answer any questions.
Right. Do we have a motion for the friendly amendment?
So moved.
Okay, and then Dave's seconding?
Yes. And I can't remember where you all went.
And then you can do a voice vote for that amendment.
Okay, can we have a voice vote for the friendly amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes?
So then we're discussing the whole handbook, and I'm happy to answer any questions or?
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
I'd be interested in the AI policy section on one ninety-one or within the new employee book fifty-six. That if any content is made with AI, that they report it to their superior when they provide material. I'm in the sciences, and AI is showing up all over the place.
I'm sorry, what language did you want included? Can you tell me again?
That, so it, there's a whole section on the use of content that's AI-generated. But I would love something that actually says that any content made is reported to their superior when they hand it in, that it was partially AI-generated. So it's acknowledged. Because in the literature publications, it's showing up all the time, and there's major errors, because they get comfortable with it and they don't actually check it, and it ends up being sometimes completely imaginary data, false, misleading, all sorts of things.
I did have some like languages, it had to be reviewed, but I can tighten it up with, you know, needs to be acknowledged that AI was used in the creative, creation of this content, and then require supervisor review.
Yeah, because the review I read was almost self-administered rather than?
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I'd appreciate if that's okay.
So this is, I'm trying to figure, I had a question about this, and I don't want to put you on the spot, because it's a big handbook. But there was a section on accessibility, and I appreciate that the, they backed away from some language, which was like, there shall be no accommodations made. It was like, it's, now it says that the, the city is under no obligation to provide accommodations for personal stuff, but I didn't know what that meant, but I have to?
So we'll make accommodation for work needs. So like, if you have a vision need, or, and you need like, for example, a large monitor or a screen reader, or something like that, we will absolutely accommodate that for your, for you to do your job. But we would not then provide you to have like a screen reader or a large monitor at home, because that would be for personal use. And so that was that clarification.
But it sounds like it's clarifications now, the city's not under no obligation to do so, but it sounds like we're opening it up to?
And we've always had an ob-
Conversation about, you know?
We've always had an obligation to accommodate any sort of need. I think we were just clarifying that it's for work use.
Okay, thank you.
Does the city have, I don't know if I, I don't think I saw this, is there a sick bank, like if someone, can they donate?
Okay, so there's a couple of things. So in two thousand, end of two thousand twelve, employees who had a lot of hours then earned a sick bank, and that will carry with them, and they're able to then be paid out for that sick leave. Starting in twenty thirteen, you can still accrue sick leave, but at this time, we no longer pay people out upon departure for sick leave. And then, however, if someone has a very grave illness and they run out of sick time, under special consideration with city manager approval, people can donate their sick leave. So we have had instances where there's been like people with cancer or things like that, that people have donated their leave for that person to be able to take extended leave. That would be the example how that would be used.
Thank you.
And we don't need any amendments for what Jason had said, right? That was just suggestions?
I think you probably do, because it's not.
I think it would probably be another friendly amendment. So we can like, do you want to phrase it, or I wrote down what I thought you said?
I'd actually prefer your wording, but I also wanted to make sure staff had no issues with that. It's just reporting to your superior that you used it when you provide material.
So what I wrote off the cuff was acknowledge that AI was used in the creation of content and have supervisor review before it can be utilized. How about that?
Sounds great.
Do we have a motion to adopt the friendly amendment?
So moved.
Second? Okay. Okay, so that passes. So? Oh my gosh, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, so that passes. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's move on to our first reading, our ordinances.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision application and plat for South Farm Section Four, residential subdivision of six point eight acres with conditions.
All right, Sam?
Good evening, councilors. These first two items are related, and that's why they have identical staff reports. So this one is South Farms, South Farm Section Four, but it's actually the second phase of this, this particular development. There's eleven houses out there now. This would add additional twenty-five and allow the lots to be sold. You may remember, a few months ago, plan development was approved, which was actually similar to a previous plan development that did not move forward. This is a different developer, Cristo Homes. And, but, an additional step before the land can be sold and developed into individual homes, plat has to be approved, so the lots can be divided and sold. And along with that, there are changes in the public right-of-way, land ownership. The land that the city already has is public land for utility easements, stormwater easements, roadway, those types of things. And because of the existing plat that's already out there, where there are no houses at all, the geometry of the new subdivision is a little bit different. And so this, these two ordinances, one would vacate those existing easements and right-of-way, and allow the new plat and the geometry of that new layout to be in place, which is twenty-five instead of thirteen lots.
Okay, any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion? Seeing none. It's the first reading, so we won't be voting on that. Second ordinance?
An ordinance vacating right-of-way associated with Roberts Drive and Hoover Drive and extinguishing easements, as were previously established by OR seventy-nine fifty-nine, page fifteen fifty-one, replat South Farm Section Two and Two A.
Sam?
Same thing as before. This goes back to two thousand and seven, so this would be removing those rights-of-way that were never developed and replacing them with a newer.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion? No? Moving on to third ordinance?
An ordinance amending Section one eighty-three oh three of the Oxford codified ordinances and changing the disposition of the convention tax receipts.
Jessica?
Good evening, councilors. With the new requirement of an annual financial commitment to Miami University for economic development as part of our MOU, and with the city council's goal of a thriving year-round economy, we need to find funding for our economy and create new jobs in our community. This is a recommendation to modify the tax distributed to Enjoy Oxford from an automatic one hundred percent of the convention tax to instead alignment with the Ohio revised code to be at least fifty percent. This will allow the finance director to budget more accurately for how much will be dispersed to Enjoy Oxford each year. The budgeted amount for twenty twenty-five is three hundred and three thousand dollars, three hundred and three, six hundred and eighty dollars. Thereafter, we would recommend that Enjoy Oxford be granted a four percent increase each year as long as that amount does not fall below the state mandated fifty percent of the convention tax. Any overage that would come in from tax receipts would then, our recommendation would be to put into an economic development fund. This fund may be used for economic development activities, including business supports, site acquisition, site preparation, and placemaking activities such as the upcoming public restroom maintenance and cleaning, arts, events, et cetera. Enjoy Oxford continues to be a valuable partner to the city of Oxford and supports visitors through their website, visitor's guide, and community calendar. They also support community events that engage both visitors and the general public. We are not aiming to cut Enjoy Oxford's funding. Instead, we hope to stabilize their annual funding with a planned increase each, each year. The excess funds above the annual amount will allow the city to meet our obligation to the MOU signed with Miami University regarding our annual economic development investment. And I believe there is public comment from Enjoy Oxford.
Any public comments? I'll give you, thank you, Kim, for being here. I'll give you a warning when it's one minute left. Just in case you see me do something.
If I look up. Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilors. My name is Kim Daggy, Franklin County, Indiana resident, speaking as a- My name is Kim Daggy, Franklin County, Indiana resident, speaking as Executive Director, Enjoy Oxford, located at 14 West Park Place, Sweet Sea, Oxford, Ohio. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today regarding the critical importance of convention tax funding for the Oxford Visitors Bureau. Operating as Enjoy Oxford, a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization, our mission is to enhance the economy of the city of Oxford through the following key areas of focus. Marketing and promotion. We develop advertisements, attend shows, and issue press releases to keep Oxford top of mind as a destination. Visitor engagement. We manage enjoyoxford.org, social media accounts, a community calendar, and produce a visitor's guide and welcome materials for new arrivals. Destination development. We create and support events and festivals, collaborate with partner organizations, and advocate for community enhancements that attract visitors. These initiatives are vital for driving foot traffic to our local businesses, ensuring their sustainability as we transition toward a year-round economy. Our vibrant shops, restaurants, and attractions not only promote leisure travel, but also contribute to a thriving ecosystem and recruitment for Miami University. With two additional hotels being built, Enjoy Oxford is looking forward to this momentum and growth. Tourism is undeniably an economic driver. As Melina Huntley, Executive Director of the Ohio Travel Association, Appleby states, "It starts with a visit." Our mission to position Oxford as a premier destination for great experiences, amenities, and a place to live and work is more important than ever. In 2023, our welcome guide was distributed to eight countries and 34 states, reaching potential visitors far and wide. Additionally, local real, local realtors hand-select this guide to share with their clients, further promoting our community. In 2024, Enjoy Oxford and the city entered into a memorandum of understanding in the amount of $50,000 to continue the goals of the Oxford Tomorrow, a year-round economy in celebration of the people and places that make Oxford unique. Events like the Uptown Concert on June 6, 2023 with Fleetwood Gold, which attracted 1,000 to 1,500 attendees, and the Eclipse Weekend festivities boasting a 2 million economic boost demonstrate the effectiveness of our efforts. Through a combination of digital and print advertising, newsletters, and event promotion, we showcase Oxford as the best college town on various platforms. With the proposed funding changes, as in the first reading, the reality of this fund cap is sobering. I'm committed to maintaining fiscal responsibility while ensuring we have a balanced budget and a three-year month operating reserve. As a result, the current 40% allocation for advertising, promotion, and event partnerships will decrease to less than 20%. Also included is the elimination of part-time and seasonal positions, reduce visitor center hours and event seasons to avoid overtime, and focusing on events and items to produce, to produce convention tax. Events like uptown music concerts that do not equate to more overnight visits. We have successfully managed larger expenditures in the past thanks to lodging tax revenues exceeding city budget expectations. Reducing funding now would be counterproductive to achieving our long-term goals for Oxford Tomorrow Plan. I urge you to reconsider the narratives surrounding this funding. Could we identify a solution that addresses the $270,000 economic development requirement without imposing a permanent cap? With new hotel inventory coming online, will this generate enough added funding to add to the city's economic development budget to satisfy this agreement with Miami University? Could we revisit this annually for this funding rather than a permanent restriction for the life of the agreement? In conclusion, the need for tourism funding is clear. Enjoy Oxford is essential to fostering a stronger community as outlined in the Oxford Tomorrow Strategic Plan. Let's work together to support our efforts and ensure we have the necessary resources to continue this important work. I urge you to prioritize a solution that promotes growth and collaboration rather than capping funding. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kim.
And for giving my typo.
Any other public comments? Council discussion?
So I have a question, which is, you know, I think Enjoy Oxford and the city of Oxford have had an amazing partnership. And Enjoy Oxford has also been very, you know, forbearing. When we went through COVID, they suffered through with the reduced revenues and made it through. And now things have kind of stabilized, our revenues are good. But if I were with Enjoy Oxford, knowing that new hotels are coming online, one could anticipate some future growth. And so I, I wonder about the idea that Oxford kind of capping where we are today with a 4% increase when we are looking at two new hotels, not the revenue. I, I know we want the revenue, I know we want the $270,000, but I'm just wondering if there's not a proportional answer that enables if there continues to be growth in hotels, if Miami builds a hotel, do we capture all of that or, I mean, I know it needs to be at a minimum of 50%, but I just feel I could, Enjoy Oxford not benefit from such growth as opposed to being capped at a 4% increase? That's just kind of my question.
So just to clarify, the ordinance change simply says at least 50%. And then the 4% growth was in the staff report, but not a part of the ordinance. And, and so in reality, it is something that if you desired, you could look at on a more routine basis. That was just our initial recommendation, but the ordinance was written, excuse me, written quite broadly on purpose.
With the excess funds, is it just limited to? What other areas could this money be devoted for or is it limited based on state law?
I don't want to misspeak because there's two different taxes that come from lodging and so I could get back to you. But I know that one is very restrictive and one is for like any allowable purpose. So let me get back to you on which is which. I don't want to misspeak.
Because I, I know we have obligations with Miami to, you know, continue that, that push for more visitors and everything else. But I would love to see some of this, if there's potential there, go towards housing as well. And I do think that we, this only gives us more options in terms of the ability to give back to Enjoy Oxford when necessary.
So I appreciate, and I didn't make that distinction that, that the ordinance is only about at least 50%, but the only number I see that's about what our commitment to Joy Oxford is a recommendation about a 4%. And so, you know, I, I appreciate the flexibility that I think the city needs to claim some of that revenue for our own economic development. So I'm okay with the more flexible language, but I, I think I want to talk more about what that, how that budgetary allocation would be. Because I feel like if, if Enjoy Oxford is able to stimulate growth such that there are new hotel stays, they should, and if they were in excess of 4%, you know, like I just think a fixed cap doesn't seem very incentivizing.
Well, in a way that ordinance is written, you could address it each year through the budget process too. You know, because God forbid if we have another recession or COVID situation where things decline. So, you know, it's written with that flexibility in there. You know, the law basically says 50% of that 3% tax. And, you know, so like Jessica said, we, we build in some flexibility and we just suggested that 4%, but that's something that council could look at each year, depending on what our estimate is.
I, I envisioned this being, us being responsive to Enjoy Oxford and their needs year to year because it's collaborative and always has been collaborative. I don't imagine that being an issue.
But I do think that if I were, if I were Enjoy Oxford and I had had a commitment of 100% of the revenues, then my budgets would be based on the uncertainty of how many, how much revenues would be there. You know, but if it's now not only how much revenue is there and how much of the city of Oxford is going to share those with me, then it becomes kind of hard to budget year to year what you have. And so I, if, if we get to second reading, I think that, I would love to see fleshed out a little bit more some other alternative finance models other than just a 4%, a cap and a 4% increase.
In the actual ordinance?
No, not necessarily in the ordinance, but.
Okay, so in our approach.
Again, I mean, like if I were Kim, I would be, okay, so they, they're backed away from a commitment to 100%. Now it's at least 50. That doesn't give me a ton of confidence as to what, what I can budget with.
So we can share at the next reading kind of our approach, like maybe leave the ordinance language alone, but approach to budgeting for, for their cycles? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think I, I think we just, we communicate clearly some commitment to Enjoy Oxford if only, if not in the ordinance, at least verbally about what they can expect from us.
I agree with David because if they, I think that percentage could be and should be flexible because let's say they have a, a huge year or we have another eclipse event or something or two eclipse events, you know, you know, we just need to be flexible on what, what we have available for them.
I agree with that. I just think Oxford would be, we would be responsive to their needs.
Yeah, I don't have any idea how to suggest we, you know, we, we tie them together, but I think as long as we say we'll look at it.
I think a few things. I think that it's important to note that this is not by any means a cut in the amount of money that Enjoy Oxford is getting, correct? Right? So that I think that is an important thing whenever we talk about it, so it is not a cut. Two, the city has really done such a good job at driving economic development and placemaking as well. And so it's been really exciting over the last couple of years to see how much growth has been there. So, and the third being that there has always been such a huge collaborative spirit between the two entities that I do, I don't think that the city will not be responsive to their needs in the future. So I think those are the three things that I would understand why this is coming on board because the city also has the added ability of not only placemaking, but other economic development that could benefit everybody. So I'm personally in favor of this.
I have a question. What, what does that $303,680 represent in terms of percent?
That's the amount we budgeted. And, you know, we're gonna, we're probably gonna exceed that unless something happens.
But you understand my question, Jessica?
Yeah, and I don't have a quick answer, but I can get one, I can get one to you for the next.
Okay. I mean, that's not, that's not at 50% of what it was before, but like where, where does that fall?
That, that comes from our estimate, what we bring in. If you, you know, on page 139 in the budget, we show expenses of contractual services of, of 303,680 and a transfer of the Economic Development Fund within ours.
So it's 100% of the budgeted amount?
Okay.
Okay. What, we are conservative in our budgeting. So what frequently happens is more comes in than what we budget. You with me so far?
Yes.
And currently with the language, when more comes in than what we budget, we come to you, we do a supplemental, and we send more to Enjoy Oxford. With this change, they would get the budgeted amount and then any overage would not then flow through unless council made an action to do so. It would not be automatic. Does that answer your question?
As long as it, we did dip below 50%.
As long as it did not dip below 50%. So it is 100% of the budgeted amount right now.
Okay.
But in all reality, we expect that there probably will be more, but we, we budget cautiously on purpose.
Thank you. And then my second question is that this economic development, MOU with Miami, was somehow tied to the FIRE EMS contract?
Yes.
Can you remind us, like, what happens if our obligation isn't met with the economic development aspect as it relates to FIRE and EMS?
We did ask Miami to separate the FIRE EMS commitment and their request for economic development and they agreed, but they are still linked. And so we do have an obligation to commit $270,000 toward economic development activities each year and to report on those activities multiple times a year. I intend to report to them what we're doing when I report to you, our year, like our progress toward our yearly goals. I believe in the language, there is the option that if you're not doing this commitment, they could pull the other funding. And so it is a serious commitment and I want to, I want to make sure that we're fulfilling that financial obligation of the economic development investment.
Thank you.
So for that $270,000, just so that I understand it, there's nothing that would prevent us from funneling that overage back to Enjoy Oxford, but it would come into that Economic Development Fund first and then we could pivot it back to Enjoy Oxford, either to be responsive to need or is that an option that would be available?
I imagine you could if you set the fund up that way. And I would just say as long as you're using it for an economic development purpose, that's the heart of the criteria.
Okay. I would also note just for council edification and public edification, the next Enjoy Oxford Board meeting is the day before our next council meeting. So I imagine we'll be discussing this as a board too and can have a more informed discussion of what the Board of Enjoy Oxford would want as well.
And again, just to kind of reiterate, some idea of alternative formulas that, that are not just a cap and a 4% increase. I, you know, I would love to see that upfront just so that I know. Again, it doesn't change. I'm, I'm with Vice Mayor Raghu that I support this, but I'd like to see what our, at least pencil out what our commitment is.
We will be prepared to share some ideas.
Okay, moving on to the next ordinance?
An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Oxford, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025.
Heidi?
These next four, I believe, are mine, so I might be up here for a minute. These first, the first, these next three actually all pertain to the budget. It's the appropriation ordinance, the advance ordinance, and the transfer ordinance. The appropriation ordinance reflects the information that was presented at council at the October 17th work session. Two changes were made since that presentation. One was to allow for the advance of the Capital Improvement Fund from the General Fund to fund the EV charging stations in anticipation of the reimbursement from the OKI grant that was awarded. The second was to transfer additional property tax levy money to fund the next phase of the Oats Trail. We realized that with, that the Oats Revenue Fund was, had additional money in it that we could utilize to help balance the construction of the trail fund between interest and just additional tax coming in above our budget. And then the items that we discussed at the work session that Council for which had brought up, we did not include, but we are, are to be, we have discussed that we were going to review them in 2025 with possible adjustments to the budget.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
Do we want, here, I can't remember whether we asked for the public now or no? Oh. So I, I did just recall, I did make some requests. One was for some place, creative placemaking in uptown alleys. I did ask for some, that we start dedicating some explicit funding for ADA compliance at intersections so we could progressively work through those out of the cap. Both of those are capital budget. And also the third one was just to somehow work in the five-year plan. It's not a budgeted item, but we think about that pedestrian connection with Care Road. So it says here that items were discussed, not included, and will be reviewed in 2025 with possible adjustments to the budget. So what does that mean?
Well, I think the, dealing with the alley, we had also discussed about having a work session with council. You know, and if we decide to move forward with it, we'll have to figure out whether we do a supplemental or utilize some other monies. But I think the first step was, I think we all agreed that we wanted to have a work session on that because it has implications not only for that alley, but there's another alley where a business owner wanted us to close it down for him. So that's the first item. The handicapped accessibility, I think we need to take a look at that too. We don't have any cost estimates for that and that's primarily, isn't that where you have pedestrian buttons that beep? So that if someone, you know, has problems, is blind or has visibility problems, they can hear that beep. So, you know, I don't know that we have good cost estimates for that.
Well, I, I distinctly remember that there was two budget items that you said maybe we could allocate some of that money. So those are just budgeted expense items. So if that is chosen and we reduce and add that to, to these ADA compliance things, we can do that within the parameters of next year's budget.
So I just, I mean, the culture that we've had is that if there are budget items now, I mean, I know we talk about the supplementals, but I do not recall in our experience having a council item resolved in the supplemental in, in, in this upcoming year. So I had hoped, I mean, again, I think that I, I can imagine a budget item like $10,000 for creative placemaking in uptown alleys, whether it goes to these closure of the alleys or something else, is something I'm requesting. And the other thing is, is to identify some amount of funding to progressively improve the ADA compliance of intersections. I don't know what that number is, what we can afford. I think it's, you know, in your spirit of biting an elephant, you can have one bite at a time. We could set an amount and see how far that gets. We could set an amount and see how far that gets us each year. So if I have to make an amendment to the budget in our final, I can do that. I just hope that they, those requests would be reflected in the budget.
I'm in support of both those as well.
Okay, moving on to the next ordinance. An ordinance outlining budgeted advances for the City of Oxford, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Heidi?
The budget advances are used to allow specific funds, money to spend prior to receiving a reimbursement from other resources. These amounts are then returned to the advancing prior, advancing fund prior to year end. So the advances this year from the General Fund are to the Oxford Area Trail, Oxford Area Trail Fund, Capital Improvement Fund. And those funds will be reimbursed from OKI, ODNR, and O property tax. The advance from the General Fund to the Employee Benefit Fund, funds to be reimbursed from the employee's contribution for the flexible spending program. Advance from the General Fund to the Special Assessments Fund for the sidewalk curb and gutter repairs associated with the repaving program. An advance from the General Fund to the OVI Task Force Fund, federal funds received pursuant to the OVI Task Force Grant for the OVI Task Force Activities. And then the advance from the General Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund for the OKI reimbursement for the EV charging stations.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion? All right, next ordinance. An ordinance outlining budgeted transfers for the City of Oxford, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
The description of the budgeted transfers for the twenty twenty-five include operating support, capital transfers, debt service payments, and this year to assist with the addition of the three full, new full-time firefighters. There's a list, there's a long list of funds. I can read them all if you would like.
Joe read them all. Are you gonna read them all?
The advance was a little different.
May he rest in peace, he read them all.
It was a, for, a little more for specific projects and where the revenue was coming from. These are for operating expenses, capital transfers, things like that, to support the other funds.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion? Nope. All right, move on to the next ordinance. An ordinance to adopt fees and charges for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Heidi, again.
Yes. So I know that we gave this to you at our council work session, and we reviewed it briefly. I was, we didn't spend a lot of time, but department heads are here. They submitted their recommended changes to the Finance Department. We made this draft fee ordinance for you. So any questions regarding the fees can be directed to the respective department heads.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council?
Can I just ask a technical question, and this is for Casey? Which is, there's an electric tap fee for large things like ice machines and inflatables. I don't, I think that was under reservation. Why is it a hundred dollars to tap in an inflatable at an event? I understand that there are kilowatt hour costs, but I just, I didn't understand that, if you could clarify.
So there's just a standard per day fee?
Okay.
So an inflatable versus an ice machine versus something else, there isn't a way to really calculate exactly what that item is going to cost us?
Okay.
So it's just something we charge per day. Some people use that for two hours, some people leave it plugged in for the whole weekend, depending on the event.
Okay.
It'd be very difficult for us to charge an electric fee per hour?
Yeah.
And manage that.
So I haven't, you know, I, it just, I, I don't know what the going rate for something like that is. And so I guess I would just hope that as, if, as we do more events, that like if we start to feel, hear back from people that an amount like that is, I mean, I want us to be supportive of events and, and that our fees are fair. So that, I was just a random sort of thing I picked up.
We rarely see that fee only on large events like the Epicub Soccer Tournament.
Okay.
Bigger events like that, some small event that someone rents a shelter, they don't pay a hundred dollars to tap into an inflatable, because first of all, we don't let them have their own inflatables.
Okay.
Yeah, smaller events, don't, don't utilize that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, next ordinance. An ordinance establishing salaries and certain benefits for salaried and hourly, full-time and part-time employees within the service of the City of Oxford, Ohio, paid from January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Jessica?
Good evening again. Each year, we bring forward this ordinance to set our staffing quantities and wages for twenty, the following year. So these are our recommendations for twenty twenty-five. In the full-time staff category, we do recommend eleven full-time new staff. Eight of those would be in the Fire and EMS division, and it would be contingent upon the passage of the levy. In other divisions, we have one additional service worker to assist with cemetery operations, such as maintenance and grave preparation. We've realized we have one staff member who's really dedicated to doing this, and who else is learning this skill? So we think it's a good idea to have a little bit of backup there. In the Service Division, we also have a water operator, but this person will not be hired until quarter four at the end of twenty-five. And this will be due to the increased capacity needed with the new water softening project. And then finally, we're recommending a new police officer to allow for some succession planning with a possible retirement in twenty-five. In the year-round part-time category, we have three new inspector positions. One is the Community Development Grant-funded position for the Tobacco Retail Program. This person's actually already there, but they weren't in last year's salary ordinance, so I've added them in. And then two part-time inspectors in the Fire Division. Seasonal part-time staffing will remain the same. And we are recommending that staff get a four percent cost of living adjustment for most staff members to maintain a balance with the wages offered in our collective bargaining units. And then finally, we recommend ten thousand dollars be allocated to our education and tuition reimbursement budget to help for non-contract employees to pursue further education that is related to their careers. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
I just can't help but comment on my pride that the City of Oxford is committed to four percent cost of living increases to its employees, coming from my position on campus where their position is not as humane. So I, I know it's hard to budget. We've been seeing high cost of living increases, and four percent these days barely keeps up, but we're committed to doing that, and our, and our, the contracts that we have negotiated with our union employees have had, I mean, I, I think within the realm of fiscal responsibilities, they've been as generous with our employees as is fiscally responsible. And I, I really appreciate that we can, I mean, I'm proud to adopt an ordinance that, that pays people fairly. Miami could learn a thing or two from that. But that's just some unbidden commentary.
All right. So we have no second readings tonight, so we'll move on to announcements. Doug?
I know we're all anxious to get home, see what, how the election's going.
Yeah.
So I'll just share one thing with you. I had an opportunity to speak to the, it was the Institute for Learning and Retirement that Miami University provides. And this was a session that former council member Edna Suther organized. It was about government, and I was the, the last speaker, and I spoke on local government, specifically the City of Oxford, our form of government, our charter, our ordinances and resolutions, and boards and commissions. And then she also asked me to include information on county government. And I did share with the group that, you know, we have eighty-eight counties, and two of them are charter county governments, and that would be Cuyahoga and Summit County. And I also talked a little bit about township government and how we interact with both those other entities. So it was a good session, thirty-four students. I think probably over half of them came in by Zoom, and the others were in, in class. So I enjoyed it. I always enjoy talking about local government, and it was a good class. So that's all I have this evening.
All right. Mike, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
JJ? No. Heidi? No, Casey, oh, Casey's coming.
I get treated so well by my fellow department heads. Just a quick update. So Monday, November eleventh, we will do our annual City Veterans Day event at eleven AM in the Uptown Parks. As usual, we'll have Talawanda students and preschool students and local veterans and a lot of different groups. Miami ROTC will help us with that celebration. And speaking about Veterans Day, I'll give a quick plug for Oxford Empty Bulls event, which is this Saturday, and they do give out free meals to veterans at that event. And then a quick update on our dog park. It is closer and closer to ready every day. We're kind of waiting for some grass to germinate and get a little bit established before we set people free in there, and dogs. Thank you.
Sam? Jessica?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing, thank you. Chris? Okay. Mike?
Just an update. The Township Land Use Plan Committee presented its plan in public last week. Unfortunately, it was the same night we were talking, we had the opening kickoff for our code review. But it was well-received with a lot of robust discussion. We had over seventy-five people there. Their biggest complaint was about Owl's Landing. They didn't realize that that had been annexed into the city. So they were, we fielded several complaints before we told them that that was actually annexed into the city. But yeah, so we'll make some changes, and that should be moving forward. Also had my first SCRC meeting, Student Community Relations Committee, about two weeks ago, and they would like to look at some tenants' rights and education, code enforcement. You know, they're concerned about properties where the landlord will not let us inspect, and how students or possible tenants could be made aware of that, and how complaints about properties could be better addressed. So, got a big agenda. That's it.
The same night that Mike was at the Township Land Use Meeting, I was at the Oxford Today meeting, which was a really great presentation. I know there were several other folks who were in this room, who were in that room. So we talked to a lot of really invested community members, thinking about what we can do to help make Oxford's code kind of more up-to-date and up-to-speed with current needs, and then thinking about how we can blend historic and architectural preservation into that. So a really informative meeting, looking forward to seeing what's next. Oxford Empty Bulls is in fact this weekend. I will be there. Very much looking forward to it. And the cemetery tours went really well this year. We had great weather, maybe unseasonably warm, but that's okay for all three tours. Really interesting, really informative. But we're looking forward to perhaps touring Woodside Cemetery next year. So getting a new cemetery on our list to check it out. But yeah, I think that's it.
Amber?
If you haven't had a chance to go by Pepper Park and see our mural that was painted by Hannah Webb, please do. It is just, it's beautiful, and between that mural and the mural that Joe Presser did that's privately funded, and there was something in the Hamilton Journal news about that. I'm excited for public art in, in the City of Oxford and to, to see where we go next. I also want to just thank everyone who participated in the democratic process, from running for office. It takes something to run for office. And our Vice Mayor is running for County Commissioner. I wish you luck. Every position, whatever your political party is, to put your hat in the ring and to run takes something. The people who worked at the polls, the people who handed out slate cards for whatever political party, thank you for engaging in the democratic process. For years, I voted, early this year, I decided to vote on Election Day. And there's something hopeful about going into a local precinct or polling station and seeing your neighbors, your colleagues, people whose signs differ from yours in the same place. People were smiling and talking to each other as we waited in line, and I think that's something very hopeful.
Nothing for me tonight.
David?
So yeah, I wanted to also reiterate the thanks to people who ran for office. It's, it's a huge commitment, and, and really appreciate people putting themselves out there and keep fingers crossed. I appreciate all the poll workers who helped keep the democratic process moving along, anybody who participated in the democratic process. And I know that like, probably the elephant in the room, because we all want to go and watch the results. But, you know, I talk to my students often, which is, we spend so much of our bandwidth obsessing over what's happening in Washington DC, sometimes to the detriment of what's happening right underneath of our nose, you know? Tonight, we've been talking about how to allocate thirteen million dollars of taxpayer dollars into, you know, roads and, and social services and all that kind of stuff. And, and I love those folks who are here tonight, but it doesn't, you know, it barely registers on people. And so what I would say is, I think that in, in this hyper-polarized era in which we focus so much on Washington DC, you know, I hope that people recognize that like, if you want to look for a model of good, common sense government that is consensus-based and practical, your local municipality is not a bad place to start. And I hope that we can take it down a notch. I mean, I, I personally, like, I know who I voted for, who I'm hoping is gonna win, but I feel like this country has to walk back from the precipice of the polarization we have, which we just seem like two, two groups of people living in the same country, but it's like two separate countries. But, you know, when I interact with people locally, when, in Kroger, I think that, that's not the world I see. That I see people who get along really, really well, that are civil to one another. If I could just stay off Oxford Talk, I would believe, I would believe that we all were better people. But, so, you know, I think that, like, I guess I would just say, it's kind of the elephant in the room. There's gonna be an election, and a good percentage of people are going to think the world ends one way or the other. But I think if we pay more attention to our neighbors and the people we bump into at Kroger, and realize that they're different from us, and they may differ, differ from us in how they vote, but they're good neighbors, and we're gonna have to find a way to, I think that's gonna be our way through, you know, whatever happens with the election, we're not done with some of our difficult times. So I'm, I'm proud to be focusing on the municipal level and keep trying to do the basic good work of local government.
Thank you, and so excited for tonight. And whatever happens, I feel like for myself personally, it'll be a win-win, because if I don't win, I get to spend another wonderful year with y'all. And everyone has been so supportive. Thank you so much for everything you've done and all your support. I appreciate it so much, and there's been so many community members that have just been like the beating heart of the campaign. I would be balled up in a corner somewhere without them. So just thank you, thank you, thank you. And I also have been selected to attend the United Nations Climate Conference, COP twenty-nine, and I'm gonna say it wrong, and I probably shouldn't say, I'll be embarrassed, Azerbaijan. I don't know if that's right. Is that right?
I can correct you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll be attending that next week. I'm super excited to just see where it happens, especially in a very heavy oily, oil-producing country. I don't understand, but I'll be happy to report back on how things go. So thank you again, and...
I move adjournment?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.